And here we are with item 10.3. So what this was, was direction from our March 28th meeting, which was the council giving direction to staff to return with an informational report that really gives kind of the structure of where our elections are for Elk Grove, how we got to that path, and to kind of summarize this information. That's the intent of the report. When we talk about all these items, and this is going to be an overview, which is how did Elk Grove come to be? How did it get its governance structure and the method of our elections? But part of this discussion as an informational report is to set a foundation for our community, to have a discussion about this, because we do have these discussions coming up about what is our election model? What are these options that we have? And the real intent of this report is to go through these items. So what I have is our formation background as a city, so that's going back to the days of incorporation. Some brief discussion about what are these different forms? What are these words at large and from district and by district? What is a directly elected mayor? And how does that affect our elections and the process in which we put elected officials into office? The report then goes on just to talk about some efforts that have been going on to make effects on this. Our state legislature has gone in and dabbled a little bit as far as how general law cities approach their elections. And so I have some brief touching points on that, as well as some local measures that have gone forward about our governing structure. And then we'll go back to our process of how we have districts for running elections. So that was our process of redistricting, which we've done in the city of Elk Grove. And it's a brief discussion about demographics and what we've seen from the 2010 census and what those numbers look like. And last, there is some analysis that went into looking at how have elections been run in Elk Grove? What's happened over the eight elections that have occurred in the city of Elk Grove? Are there any kind of trends that we can look at? But what we're really doing is putting a lot of this data and compiling it into one place. It's really the intent of the reports, that we not only have the background to have a consistent definitional terms and definitional terms, to have a dialogue that we're all on the same page. But it's also to look at where do these numbers come from? Where do these census numbers come from? How do we look at demographics in the city? And how do we look at election numbers so that we're all on the same page as a community and we can continue to have discussions going on? Part of two things that you'll see that I'll bring up is a lot of, I will bring up, that Elk Grove is very unique in how it is situated in California, that we are a general law city, and we'll get into talking about that. There's a lot of elements that come for our Elk Grove community that we are unique in our governance structure and our method of elections. Another kind of theme that you'll see me going into is talking about lenses. At the end of the day, we're talking about elections, and elections are very complex processes, I think, as all of you know. And where we're talking about this discussion is the lenses of the structure, it's the lens of looking at our demographics, but there's other numerous factors that go in. And I'll talk about some of these different lenses and how folks look at them. But part of it is, I think of it as kind of the optometrist, A, B, which one do you like better? What happens is that process of working with your optometrist actually gives you the lenses that I have that actually give me the clear picture of what's going on. And so I think a lot of this is, there's a lot of different discussions that come about our governance, our elections, but a lot of it is different lenses of how we look at this information. And we're trying to present that staff in a comprehensive way so we can have that opening dialogue. Governing structure, where do we come from? Incorporation of Elk Grove, I'll say that Elk Grove does live up to third times a charm. So the incorporation efforts, as you can see, we had three efforts that won in 1986, 1992, and then Elk Grove becomes a city in 2000. Becoming a city and incorporating in California, you do follow regulations within California state law. And through the Sacramento Local Agency Formation Commission, that is how this process starts. So in the staff report, what you have is the LAFCO goes through the process of setting up, how is it that the city's going to incorporate? And sets up those regulations and what will be the guiding principles for a city that becomes incorporated. But in order to incorporate, it required a vote of the people, a vote of the electorate. And that's where we get down into the elections that occur. When I point out in the report, there's LAFCO Resolution 1207. That is a document that's out there that really establishes a lot of our base governing structure and gives the guidance of how the state legislative laws, which of those laws apply to Elk Grove. But that Resolution 1207 brought up a lot of other elements, too. It brought up about revenue neutrality with the county. It talked about service areas that were previously owned by the area that was in the unincorporated county and how those would be transitioned over to the city. But what we also find in that 1207 is it really gives the definitions of why we have the various formats of the, under the government code for our city when it formed. We finally do get that, get that vote coming on March 7th of 2000 through that Measure J. That's what takes us to incorporation. And we also have the first Elk Grove election, which actually is completely at large. And we'll be talking about all this fun stuff of at large, from district, by district in just a little bit, but that's what gets Elk Grove started. So where do we look at Elk Grove when it started back in 2000? What you're seeing is it's a general law city, and you hear me continually saying these topics about general law city. For the state of California, we're going to be looking at legislative codes. And for local governments that incorporate into cities, you're going to be going into the government code sections of the legislative codes. And that's where you get these definitional terms. As a general law city, we're going to follow those general laws established by the state legislature. Whether those laws ebb and change over time, we're going to still follow what those laws are. And we're going to see some of those transitions happening over the life of where we've come so far as the incorporation of Elk Grove. When I talked about that LAFCO resolution, what it's doing is it's pointing to sections of the state government code telling us, these are the types of formats that we're going to have for our structure. So we have a general law city. To give that a little bit of context, it's actually kind of defined by its opposite, that other cities that you may hear about in the state of California aren't considered charter cities. Our neighbors to the north and south with Sacramento and Stockton are chartered, they're examples of charter cities. And what they usually do is they create their own charter that creates regulations that they may do that are different from what we'd find for general law cities. But Elk Grove was created as a general law city, remains a general law city today. We look at the form of government, which is council manager form of government. So the city council will be serving as the policy direction body for the agency, but that authority of the chief executive officer falls with the city manager for the operation, daily operations of the government. That's a format that's consistent with, that's a format that's allowed under, for general law cities in California, and it's remained with Elk Grove from incorporation to the current day. Inside of the incorporation documents, it did, as I mentioned briefly, I talked about there was initially an at-large election for all the council seats at incorporation. The incorporation documents are what dictated for Elk Grove to become, to follow a from district model. And again, we're going to talk about all these different models in a little bit, but it was in incorporation that we had these first terms come up. And what also the LAFCO resolution set up and by the vote of incorporating as a city is it also directed that initial district boundaries would get drawn in the first actual city council elections, which would come in future years. So not that when you had the incorporation question, that was on the same election as the at-large election for the, I want to say it's 21 candidates that stepped forward in order to become our first city council. In subsequent years, it would be required that districts be drawn. Now, I've been talking already about at-large elections and from elections, so I'd like to take just a moment to kind of go over the types of election models. And this is an overview of these kind of topics that we're going to be discussing. So we're talking that there's a definitional term for at-large elections, which means a very specific thing in California, in California law, from district elections, by district elections. And as we know, we have a directly elected mayor, and that can have this by or from district election methodology to it. So again, Elk Grove remains a general law city. General law cities are limited, and this is one of these restraints that we have, is that when we operate under the government code in the, from the state legislature, there are limits to how we can create our systems. So I mentioned some charter cities. If you follow any of the elections from Sacramento to Stockton, you'll probably see different election methods. Generally, I believe for both of their mayor positions, they have a primary, and that it requires that some, that the top two can go off to a runoff unless the top vote getter, I think, is 50% plus one. If they win out by, by a wide margin, then they're elected as mayor. But they're different types of election systems. And what we want to remember for Elk Grove as a general law city, we're going to be stuck to what's up here on the screen. These are going to be these options of how we can run our elections and our government structure. Is this all a new topic in Elk Grove? The fact that we're talking about by district now, and you might, you heard some comments earlier tonight from some of our speakers, talking about shifting to a by district issue? Is it an issue that just came up in 2018? I think I challenge us to go back, that I think it's been an issue talking about local governance probably since the early, if not middle, 1980s. So those early incorporation efforts are our residents coming forward and talking about governance structure and how they're represented. And you want to remember that as you're going through those three phases of incorporation from 19, it was mid 80s going up into 2000, that the area of Elk Grove still continued within the county of Sacramento. And so I think those discussions have been ongoing from early, as early as that period. When you look at how we incorporated and it was dictated from the LAFCO resolutions that we become from district, I think it's an indicator that we've had some discussion within the community about what the desires of the community were going forward. But even in that area, and I would be remiss if I didn't say this, that the, we did have a charter exploratory committee, and we also had a charter commission that formed and grappled with these exact issues about creating a charter. Should we be a general law or should we be a charter city? But it was also on the structure of governance. And I don't think we've ever left the discussion of from or by district, because it's come back, for myself, serving as your city clerk, we've had numerous discussions about from and by district elections. So it's been a kind of a continual dialogue that we've had, and I think that's a unique quality for Elk Grove, that it's not something that sprung upon us. We've been discussing the method of our governance for quite some time here in Elk Grove. So, starting out with these top, with the first types of the elections, we're talking about at-large elections. And so this distinction here is that you're talking about an election in which there are no representative districts at all within the jurisdiction. When you go down and you look at the jurisdiction, all it is is the boundary of where it serves. There is no districting map. There's no maps that divide it up into further electoral divisions. When the elections are held, they're held across all of the registered voters within the entire jurisdiction. Those eligible voters get to vote for all the candidates that are out there. And when you're talking about a candidate, they have to be inside of the boundaries, they have to be a registered voter, they have to reside there, and those are usually going to be consistent requirements as we go forward. So what's an example? Casuna's Community Services District is one of our local examples that we see, where when you vote, and we'll get into kind of how those votes look at the end of the day, but they don't have any districts that are defined. You're always going to be voting on those seats of those eligible candidates, but it's going to be amongst all the voters within the jurisdiction of the CCSD. From district model, this is one that's familiar to Elk Grove. So when we're talking about from district elections, there is going to be a district And those district maps are going to be defined. We got a little bit into the terms here, because when you create that position, directly elected mayor, it changes how many districts you're going to have. Elk Grove initially, from 2002 to 2010, is going to be a jurisdiction that had five from districts. When we flip over to the directly elected mayor, we're then reducing down four districts. So the difference here is that when you have a nominee for office, what their requirement is, is they must be from the district that they want to represent. In that regard, the, their registered voter and a resident of their district, but they are voted on by all the voters within the jurisdiction. So, one way I think of it, they got to be from the district and they're voted on from folks all over the jurisdiction. So it's important that we get these kind of terminologies down when we're discussing how these items go. Elk Grove Unified School District is a current example of this from district system, where when you see these seats come up for election, you do have an opportunity to vote for your representatives on Elk Grove Unified School District. Those representatives have to be from the district that they wish to represent. We then transition to by district, and I'll do my best to watch my language on this one. By district, when you're looking at this, it has a district map as well. The important element here is that when you dig down to how the vote goes for the district, is that you're, as a representative, by the district will define who's allowed to run in that district. But then you're also going to have the fact that only the folks that live inside of that district, they're the ones that are going to be determining who's elected to that office. So when you're talking about by district elections, only those residents, those registered voters that are inside of their district get to vote for their representative. So you're still going to see districts, but it's going to take away that aspect in which you don't have all the voters of the jurisdiction deciding on the seat for the by district representation. That representative has to be within that district, and they're only elected by those voters inside of their district. And that's that distinction between by and from. Where do we see that? One of the ones that we have regionally is the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. That's that example of a by district system. When we get into the types of, other types of general law systems that are allowed, the next one that we go into is the directly elected mayor. When you have the directly elected mayor, what it does is it has the opportunity to create kind of a hybrid system, that you can have a directly elected mayor and also have from districts or by districts. Currently, Elk Grove, we have a directly elected mayor with from districts. When you talk about the elected mayor, that position goes back to this type of at-large election. The mayor can live anywhere within the jurisdiction of the, of the agency, and it's all the eligible voters within the jurisdiction of the agency get to vote on the mayor. Again, it's those same kind of requirements, but they're back to the boundaries of just being that of the jurisdiction. And we're a direct example of that. So this is just kind of a quick overview, because we're going to come back to this in just a little bit. But what it is, is showing that in Elk Grove, we still have that kind of unique opportunity, that when you talk about being a voter in Elk Grove, you actually see all these systems. Because at some point, if you're a resident here within the city of Elk Grove, you're going to see these elections coming on a ballot near you at some point. And you actually get a sense of how all these systems work, how often you vote, and what say you have in your elected representatives. I don't want to leave anybody out. We also have even more than this, right? If you're an Elk Grove voter, you're going to have an opportunity with some of our water districts. SMUDS got wards, in which you'll come in there, and Los Rios Community College system, I believe, has a board of trustees as well, in which those boundaries are going to come into the Elk Grove area. So, even with taking a lens, one of the neat things about being here in Elk Grove, and probably why our dialogues continue to go on, is that we see examples of this on all of our ballots every election year. I think it's kind of a unique perspective, that in some other areas of California, you probably aren't going to see every single system represented at some level near you. So I talked about incorporation and where Elk Grove was. We did change our systems. So remember that first election and incorporation was actually an at-large election. As we go into 2002 and into 2010, we are a different type of system. And when we get into 2010 is when the measure for the directly elected mayor comes forward and is approved by the voters. So when we're talking about the governing structure of Elk Grove in 2018, we have under our belt that we've been from district system. We've gone through a census, which we'll talk about a little bit in redistricting, but we also have a directly elected mayor. So when we're talking about our governing structure, nothing's changed in regards to us being a general law city. We remain a general law city in 2018. We remain having a council manager form of government, and we have a directly elected mayor and four council members elected from district. We're talking about the mayor for a two-year term, council members for four-year terms. When we was, when we were asked last, at the last council meeting, to bring this item back, one of the items from the vice mayor was asking for us to place in context kind of how we do when we do our budget process, that Elk Grove doesn't provide all services. And part of that makes sense by how many times we vote for different representatives. We have a lot of representative agencies that take care of different aspects of the business of the region. And so Elk Grove is different from a lot of cities and unique in its own way, that we're not what is considered a full-service city. What happens is there's a lot of services that are provided in the area of Elk Grove that are provided by different government agencies. So when you're talking about the CCSD and parks, when you're talking about who's providing sewer, water, power, those are usually going to be agencies that are outside of the city of Elk Grove. Some other aspects that come forward, and I think one of my clear examples is I've had some relatives move into the community recently. And part of it is explaining to them about the composition and the makeup of our city council. But some of the things that catch a lot of new voters by surprise, and maybe even some of our older voters, is that our elected officials in Elk Grove are not full-time positions. They're not full salaried positions, and I don't need to tell all of you that, I think you know the, the positions that you have. You have a, you have a stipend, it is a time commitment, but it's something that you're doing outside of, you also have day jobs that you have. And for a lot of folks, when I talk to them, they do, they, they wonder, wow, Elk Grove, it's a big city, and yet their representatives, they're all kind of doing their service as their second job, third job if not. And that's one of the items that catches them by surprise. Another one that comes out there is about the term directly elected mayor. And one of the immediate associations that I find a lot of people have is they say, oh, does that mean the mayor runs the city? And I think this goes back to our structure, which is that as the general law city with a council manager form of government, that term of a directly elected mayor is a different position than what is a, considered a position of a strong mayor under perhaps a city charter government system or other government systems that can go across the nation. And so when you think of the mayoral position, it is different, and I think it's different from how voters see them. But what we do see, and when we get in kind of the election, part of the discussion, is that people are very interested in voting for mayor, and we'll see that in kind of the election results. And I think I already got down there to the Elk Grove not being a full-service city. Bouncing back to those models and how they're different, one of the elements is to look at how is changing the way that you have an election model make a difference in how you have a say in the representation of your elected officials? And what this chart is going to describe to you is it's going to take those different models. So our mayor and from district, just a pure from district system at large, mayor by district and by district. And it has an example, and not all the examples, but basically I wanted to keep this to five seats. When you're talking about our city council, we have currently five seats. I know I mentioned earlier that Sacramento City Council has an example of a mayor and by system. They also elect their mayor differently, and there are also nine seats in total. And so it's a little bit different when you're looking at this. Going back to that incorporation document, and actually what most of our government codes are going to say when you're talking about elected officials, is they always stagger terms. And so when we're looking at this table, when you're talking about election A and election B, in any given November election that we have, we're going to come up, but only half the seats are going to come up for election, unless those terms sync with the sequence of our elections. We generally are only going to see our elections in November of even numbered years. So what this chart's showing us is how many times does an Elk Grove voter vote for a contest for their elected officials? What you're seeing is when we go across the table, I'm going to have you the total, for our current system, we actually, our Elk Grove residents vote on the most contests for their elected officials. Because what you're going to be seeing in election A is you're always going to be voting for the seat of the directly elected mayor, but you're going to be voting for the two council member seats that are up. And usually how we do that is it's going to be the two even seats or the two odd seats that come up in any given election. So as you go across on that mayor and from district, you have three for your first cycle of election, and let's just say that would be coming up in November 2018. In November 2020, you're going to vote again for mayor, because it's only a two-year term, but you're also going to vote for the other two council seats. And that's where you get this total that you're going to be voting on six contests. So it doesn't mean you're voting six times or anything of that nature, it's how many elected officials you're going to be making a decision on. And what you see is as the system goes, as you go from the different models, you're actually voting on less contests as a voter, as you go through those election contests. So for instance, if you get all the way down to the bottom, that example's going to still be Sacramento County, and that we only vote for our board of supervisor member once every four years, and that's the only election contest that we get. We never see the contests as Elk Grove residents for any of the other representatives in Sacramento What the staff report goes into is it does talk about state and local efforts that have gone on to talk about that government code section that dictates what types of elections that cities can have and the type of governing structures that they can have. When we go back into 2015, and part of, as I was saying, that the dialogue has been alive and well in the city of Elk Grove about this district representation, the California legislature wanted to take on their shoulders addressing issues about converting cities into by district election models. Part of the reason of this was that there were increased challenges coming from the California, based on the California Voting Rights Act. And in Southern California, there were cities that were facing litigation that was pressing their agency to change their election model and to convert into a by district system. As the California legislature looked at what was going on on the playing field, where the legislation actually started was it was looking at cities over 100,000 population. So that would grab Elk Grove. And what they were looking at initially was requiring and mandating that any cities that reach over a population of 100,000 automatically become by district. That was the initial legislation that was put forward. And as that legislation went through the process that is the legislative process up at the state capitol, it changed over time. And where it ended up being is that what it did is it provided the opportunity for cities of any size to have the option to become by district. And what I mean by the option to become by district is previously for general law cities, the only way to convert and go into a different electoral model was to present a vote, present a measure to the voters and let the voters decide about changing the method of election. What the state legislature opened up the door for is to allow a legislative body to pass an ordinance that would allow them to change their structure. So, what was unique about going through that process and seeing it unfold is that you saw what started with this process to mandate cities to become by district, started with a lot of at-large systems. And remember, when we go back to those definitions, at-large is different, there's absolutely no districts. And I believe the example, and kind of the forefront that hit this, was the city of Anaheim. And so what the city of Anaheim was, is they had no districts at all. They had just their jurisdictional boundary, so they were an at-large system. And what was found is that when they looked at who the representatives were on the Anaheim City Council, if you basically take Elk Grove and took, say, Excelsior Road, far off into the east, they found out that all of those council members lived right on Excelsior Road. They all lived in a compact, single area. The next element that came out in the Anaheim kind of analysis is that Anaheim was also a city that had a demographic in which the Latino population, I think, was close to 53% in Anaheim. And when they looked at the history of elections that were occurring in Anaheim, they found that there was no Latino representatives on the council for quite a successive number of years. And so part of that was what was driving a lot of the, kind of the impetus behind, do we need to look at how these at-large cities are operating and change them into districts? So remember, I talked about Elk Grove being unique? And the analysis that came out, and they looked at all the cities that were at-large cities over this, or they looked at cities that were over 100 population that were not by district. What they found is they first cut through and found 66 cities identified in California. Forty-one of those were charter cities. So they had their own methodologies in which they were approaching how they were doing district representation. But they found there was 25 cities that were all over 100,000, and not quite, but there was one that was by district. So of the 25 cities, there was one that was currently by district. There was 23 that were at-large systems. I think they found four more that were on the cusp of becoming 100,000, and all of those were at-large systems. And Elk Grove stood unique, as being the only jurisdiction that actually had from district elections. What creates that other unique element is that we actually had districts, as opposed to a lot of these cities that were coming under the analysis by the legislature. And where we got to is the, when the legislature finally came to where it stood, as far as giving the option, a lot of the reasoning was that there were cities that were in the midst of litigation about changing from at-large systems and going to some alternative. And some of them went to extreme other alternatives, and that by forcing them to go into by district would cause them to restart their process. And I think where the legislature came down was giving cities the option through this ordinance process in order to quickly resolve making a change to get to a by district system if that was the option of the legislative body. Going into some other elements that came up, and just to kind of give you a sense of the lenses by which folks look at how governing systems change election results, this is another take of kind of lenses of what the legislature looks like. For some Californians, yesterday was an election day, and that's in April. It's kind of an odd date. One of the items that the legislature looked at is that they looked at what the voter turnout was for elections that aren't consolidated with presidential races, that aren't consolidated with governor's races. And they found out that when you have an April election, depending on the jurisdiction, you usually would see voter participation plummet down. And so part of what the legislature did as far as looking at a lens of how do you look at how the methodologies or the requirements for running elections can make a difference, what they also grappled with was a question to force cities to actually consolidate with presidential elections, with gubernatorial elections. Because in doing that, you're going to see some better voter turnout. But it's just a method of looking at this through another lens of how do we make these systems more equitable? And it was another issue that was grappled with, with the legislature in that timeframe. For the other items, these are local measures that came up. So our Casuna's Community Services District did an expansion down to GALL, and they actually asked the question of should they change that agency to by district voting structure? And that was defeated. For Elk Grove, we asked a few questions in November 2010. Some of those resulted in us having the directly elected mayor for that term of two years, but we also had an advisory vote, asking our residents if they wanted the council member seats to change from five to seven. Again, you're talking about, these are allowed changes that are under our government code, but there are questions that we went out that when you initiate these steps, it changes how our governance goes in our city. And so we asked this question, that was defeated. Those are also with that timeframe, so you're looking at measures that went before voters in 2008 and 2010. So we're almost putting a decade behind us on those. Of recent, we did have an initiative petition that was filed in September 2017. The goal of that initiative petition was to change Elk Grove from being from district The goal of that initiative petition was to change Elk Grove from being from-district elections and changing it to go to by-district elections. The timeframe for that, for the submittal of that petition has passed, and so that effort expired. And I don't have a lot of information on that. What we basically got was the notice. So we don't know how much activity there was or how close they got to what the requirements would be for getting that, that measure onto the ballot, but that effort did not proceed. Our next phase that we go into is that when you're talking about districts, at some point you have to draw the districts. Districts are drawn according to state law. So we're going to have state law requirements that come down as to how it is that we go through the process of redistricting. Elk Grove, again, I'd count us as being a little bit unique. We've had a chance to redraw our districts three times. What happens is the initial districts were drawn from our incorporation effort, which required that before the next election for two of the council seats, districts would have to be drawn for the representatives. In December of 20, of 2003, we're going to have an annexation that occurs that brings Laguna West into Elk Grove. So when an annexation occurs for a general law city, it's required that you do redistricting. And so we went through a redistricting effort in 2004. Remember, that's with those five districts and from-district system. And I've got some numbers up there, just kind of showing some snapshots of population counts. We're talking about demographics and all the numbers that we're doing. We're always in arrears on our numbers. We're never going to be current. And the reason is in 2011, we did a redistricting effort based on the decennial federal census. And when you do redistricting, the requirement is that it's done off census numbers. So for instance, when we did our redistricting in 2004, those were based on the 2,000 census numbers. And so you have to kind of propagate these numbers forward in order to look at what you're looking at for a current day situation. So where are we right now? We're in 2018. We're a couple of years away from our next redistricting effort. To go back to what we did in 2011, that was actually an effort that I was a part of. And so I've got lots of information that I can share with you, but I can give you the truncated version. And what redistricting does, and I think a distinction in looking at the lenses of how we talk about all these different discussions, is that redistricting is a process that's done purely by population. And it's an interesting process because you're actually drawing election districts. So you're actually drawing districts with a goal of this is how people are going to vote. But you're basing it off of a base population where you have an age range that's not going to vote at all, or you have folks that aren't going to vote. And we'll talk about that more with our electoral process. But what you're talking about is doing a redistricting process in order to make elected positions, but it's based off total population, not registered voters. It's kind of an interesting quirk. When you get into redistricting, part of the traditions of creating electoral districts get propagated, where you're looking at topography, geography, cohesiveness and continuity and integrity, compactness. You're looking at these issues that people aren't making districts that start looking like squiggle lines. And I think for a lot of us, the term that we get used to is gerrymandering, and that there are ways that people can divvy up a pie, and they could cut it up into really weird ways that somebody only gets crust and somebody else gets the rest of the pie. That's what we want to avoid. And so when we went through the redistricting process, part of, again, the unique element of Elk Grove is the firm that we worked with to help us through the redistricting process, they were impressed with our community and how they came out. We ended up getting close to 30 maps. Some of those maps had some duplication, but we went through a redistricting process after our city's already been through two. We came into our third shot at redistricting. Our community produced 30 maps. Those 30 maps basically take the city and try to do the best to stay to those constraints of compactness, cohesiveness, but dividing the city up into four pieces. And this is where it gets really interesting, is that when our demographers started looking at Elk Grove and the way that you divvy up four districts into Elk Grove based on the 2010 census in 30 different ways, they found that all the districts that came back, as they went through the analysis of looking at the distribution of population, because remember, you're only divvying up purely by population is the goal from redistricting. But as they went down and they looked at the numbers of the dispersion of ethnicity, those dispersions in the districts of these 30 different varieties, they would all consistently come back to be tracking very closely with the demographic composition of the city. So that as we look at the demographics and we'll go on to some tables just to kind of look at where those demographics go, but district by district, when we cut this 30 different ways, consistently came back, giving us an indication that we have a lot of dispersion of where our ethnic groups are. And part of that, as we went through the redistricting process, is that when you go through redistricting, you look for communities of interest. You look for pockets of ethnic groups or language groups, and you look at how can that be incorporated in the process of creating your districts? And as we went through that, there, what we found is that we weren't finding those pockets in Elk Grove. We're finding that our ethnicity in our community is dispersed across the jurisdiction. As I said, part of our next steps is we'll be looking at redistricting in 2021. And up there, I threw our latest Department of Finance numbers from 2018, which is giving us that estimate at 171, just north of 171,000 residents. When we're talking about those demographics, I have a few tables that I just wanted to throw. These are from the staff report. Most of this comes from the data that's on page 15 of the staff report, but this is in the, earlier in the tables. And what you're seeing here is we're presenting the percentage breakdowns by ethnicity. And what this is, is taking that report that we did for the redistricting effort back in April of 2011. And what it, the nice part about this is we got to look, just in a quick snapshot of looking at the city council numbers with the fresh 2010 census still in that five district model. And so what you're seeing is ethnic groups identified for African-American, Asian, and Latino. Those are percentages going across the board, and it's comparing how our districts compared to the citywide dispersion of ethnicity and race across the city. And so when you look across the board, you start seeing, how do these numbers compare per district? Do we see a lot of variation? And this was our old district map model. So this is when we had five districts that were being represented. And this is taking the 2,000 census numbers. So that's where we were back in 2000, using our current models.
Jason, I think it should also be noted that those five districts, because the initial election was at-large, had to be drawn to include the geographical location of the council members who had just been elected. So some of the demographic analysis could not be performed at the high-level function that maybe it needed to be.
You are correct, but it was also a benefit that I believe all the representatives were pretty well spread out in Elk Grove. And so it did make that process go a little bit easier. We didn't, everybody didn't come from Excelsior Road off that election, so. But that was back in 2000. We took that same data for, well, we took the 2010 data and still went across these five districts. And what you're seeing is kind of this, as the term that I'm using is tracking, but you're getting closer to seeing that the districts are starting to reflect that citywide distribution that we see on race and ethnicity. And I'm just going to kind of cycle through a few of these, just give it a few moments, but then go to the next. What we then did is went through the effort of creating our four districts. So this is after we've done the 30 maps. This is when we got down to Plan Nine, which became our current district map. And in that, with a little bit of just changes that were required from Sacramento County in order to match up census tracts with, with jurisdiction, with the GIS systems and electoral jurisdictions, these are the numbers that we started getting from our four district map. When we get into the data for 2010 and going into our four district model, we're getting a little bit of additional data, and it's having, it's giving us a column for Caucasian or white. Part of this gets interesting because, and I think it would take a demographer to explain all the details to this, but when you get down into the 2010 census, even a census has restrictions and rules to it. And for the 2010 census, what you're going to see is a transition in which they allow respondents on the census, that they get an opportunity to say that they might identify under two different kind of categories. And so, and I think where it is, is it's mostly with, when, in the 2010 census, I believe that they, it bumps up our real population totals, but it allows for some Hispanic residents to be included in the white total. And it was by the nature of how they asked the questions on the census that gave those kind of categories. And it's why we have that for 2010. We didn't have it for our earlier numbers or early district distribution. But what you'll see is we're just tracking closer to that citywide percentage there on the far right, which is in bold, those are the numbers for across the city, across the jurisdiction, what our demographic composition is. But it starts tracking very closely to when we did a population division by districts. What you'll note up in the title is that this calls all age groups, and we'll get into what all age groups mean when you get down to those that are 18 and plus. Those are the folks that are allowed to vote. What happens is you see some of these percentages shift. And some of what happens in the discussion and when we go forward talking about what are the percentages across the city and who's voting, some of the things to note is that when you see citywide percentages decreasing, so let's take the sample of African-American at the top there, that when you were in the previous of all age ranges, what you're going to see is a higher percentage of African-American. What we're seeing here and what we can infer is when you're dropping from 11.22, and then you're doing, just give me the population that's 18-plus, you're losing about a half of a percent of your voting population, because they're kids. And so they're kids that are growing up. One thing that makes these groups a little more vulnerable is you start heading, even if you're heading forward, like we're in 2018 now, some of these kids may very well be adults, but that 18 to 24 or 26 range is that vulnerable range of who votes and who doesn't register to vote. And so what happens when we're talking about our demographics and our numbers, we want to be mindful of these kind of little nuances, because they change the numbers, they can have an effect on numbers, they can make a change as to how we're having our discussion. And it's kind of going into that lens of further looking into the details. Our next section goes into elections for the city of Elk Grove. And this is going to be my wrap-up, so, for the viewers at home. So when we're talking about the city of Elk Grove and consolidate and in our elections, we consolidate with Sacramento County. Remember how I talked about we get to see all these different contests on our ballot? It's because we consolidate and get our best deal by going with Sacramento County. It's what keeps our election costs down lower. I think you've heard me plead the case of not going to special elections, because we actually have to bear the full burden cost for going to a special election. We have the benefit of being able to consolidate with the county. We have the benefit of being able to see all these contests that come before us. When I talk about elections in Elk Grove, remember we're at about 171,000 population. When you talk about that 18-plus age range to vote, that population of Elk Grove actually goes down to about 115, 120,000. That's a starting point for where you have folks, but not everybody registers to vote. In order to play in the election game, you actually have to get registered to vote. And beyond registering to vote, you also have to go out and vote. What we find in the numbers, and part of that is why we added on to these attachments, the statement of the vote, is to give our residents a sense of how many people are actually coming on Election Day, or as we're going to see in the near future, election days. So you're going to have some more opportunities going forward. But that when our voters come out, how many voters are we really talking about? So once you're at that 115, 115,000 population of who's eligible to vote, our registration numbers currently are at about 90,000. When you take that 90,000, that's who's registered to vote. What we always hear about is voter turnout. So voter turnout starts taking the numbers down, because what we tend to see is we get a pretty good turnout for Sacramento County. We're at about, in Elk Grove, I think we tipped the numbers up just a little bit, but we're at about a 78% voter turnout on a presidential election. If it's not a presidential election, as we're coming up here in 2018, the numbers that we see, we drop 20%. We get down to a 58% participation rate. And that's the folks that are registered to vote. So where are we getting to? We're getting down to these drops on about 67,000 voters at this point. Now, the last part that happens is when we look at those election results, there's a column that's called undervotes. Undervotes means that people don't vote down ticket. And what often you're seeing is that that might be a voter that goes in, and they're only going to vote for the presidential election, or maybe they're there to vote on a proposition at the state level, or maybe they just decided not to vote on their local council seats or local representative boards because they don't have enough information. It's the decision by the voter to not vote, even though they cast a ballot and they voted at some point for some race on that election ticket. So once you get down to there, you're about 60,000 folks are voting in Elk Grove. Elk Grove, where are we and how many times have we run contests? We've run eight elections in Elk Grove that consist of 21 seats. Kind of sounds odd that we have an odd seat number. It's because of the directly elected mayor. When it starts coming in at two years, you start seeing that election contest coming forward more often. Of those elections, we've had a total of 69 candidates that have come forward. And that's part of what that attachment too is, is just to kind of give a snapshot of who's been running for office, who's been succeeding in office, and to just give a snapshot and kind of get a sense of what's their gender, what's their ethnicity, and what's their success in moving forward to being elected. One of the big things that comes out from the staff perspective, and it's not too ground-shaking, is that incumbents have a tendency to win. And it doesn't matter if you're an incumbent that's male or female, if you're an incumbent of any race or ethnicity, it's that you're an incumbent. We tend to see these folks getting elected back into office. And part of it is, we'll see some of the examples of how our elections have gone forward in Elk Grove. Another trend that we've seen just of recent is mentioned about the directly elected mayor position, and it's something that gets a lot of attention by residents. It also gets a lot of attention on candidates for office. What we've seen, with the exception of one of our mayoral contests, which went uncontested, but if you take the other two mayoral contests that we've had, we're getting double the number of candidates coming forward. We're actually seeing less candidates coming forward for district seats since the creation of the directly elected mayor. And you're seeing about twice as many folks coming out to run for mayor, to run for that at-large seat, as opposed to running for an individual council seat. I have on here just a review of election trends, and this is what goes to attachment six of the staff report. And this is where the city clerk took out a set of electronic crayons and started drawing on stuff. So it's really hard to present a lot of data from an election cohesively. What's a benefit is Sacramento County's been making some great efforts to take election results and put them onto maps. And I think you saw an example of that from the comments that were provided by Mr. Shergill. He provided a snapshot from Sacramento County. But when we look at these issues, and as a community, when we look at what's going on as far as trends, we want to make sure we're getting full pictures of what we're seeing. One of the, the county is being very advanced in getting out precinct results on that GIS kind of format. One thing to be mindful of is that map that's out there are actually only the results on Election Day. And it doesn't take into account the vote-by-mail ballots that come in. When you talk about Sacramento County, we're heading towards complete vote-by-mail, but in our last few elections, vote-by-mail is about 60% of our votes, as opposed to who shows up at precincts on the actual Election Day. So those maps, they're, they provide a great snapshot of information, but we want to make sure we're getting all the information. What is all the information? I'm purposely blowing up this image so you don't have to squint and look down all into the details. What you can do is you can zoom in on this electronically, pull up the information. But what you're going to see going down the line, and what those scribbly little lines are to the far left, is a description of the precincts. And it's a description of either the results back from the precinct or from the vote-by-mail ballots that represent that precinct. And it goes down the line. When you look at precinct-level data, precincts are going to be smaller divisions. They're not as small as a census tract, which can get really, really small, but they are smaller than our districts. And you have a sense of the number count of how many precincts there are. That's about double, though, because what that is representing is half of those are actual physical precincts that are drawn out on the precinct map. The other is the representative vote-by-mail votes that come from that precinct. If we wanted to dive in, we could draw lines and start going through these tables as to which districts were these precincts representing. That's a bit of a task to do since our last council meeting. And part of the effort and the exercise was to actually just look at our precinct-level data. It's more granular, it's smaller, and do we see trends? What these charts are going through is it's showing that green is showing who placed the most votes for that contest. Yellow is second place, red is third place, blue are subsequent placements. What I mean by places, who gets the most votes. And what you're seeing, and probably the easiest example, is to go to our, and this is for 2016, this is 2016. If we take that middle column that's green and yellow, what you're seeing is that for that council seat race, the green column is representing that all the districts voted in a similar manner for their first-place choice candidate. And the yellow column's going to be that those were the second-place votes. For that contest, there were only two candidates in that contest. Part of what we're seeing in Elk Grove is that you're seeing these locked bands of who's placing getting the most votes. If you want to get down into the granular level, you can blow this up too, because each of the columns has the number count, so you can get the amplitude of how much people are winning contests, how many votes they're receiving. But what we're looking for is kind of a higher view and saying, are we seeing some kind of representation in which our from-district system isn't meeting the needs? And one of the questions that has been asked is, are we encountering situations where we look at districts and we're seeing where a preferred candidate inside of a district actually is not winning their council contest, because outside the district in that at-large election system, is it the other districts that are making the decision about the representation within that district? And arguably, what we're seeing is we're seeing a consistent pattern of who's placing first. I think actually one of the best indicators is in our mayoral race. If you do look at that column and you go down to where there's a switch between the green and the yellow columns, that's probably a clearest indication that there could be a district that's actually voting differently than the rest of the city. And that's actually the type of pattern that we'd want to see to say, hey, maybe our district representatives actually are getting voted out by folks outside of their city. Now, of course, that's for the mayoral, mayoral election. That's an at-large election, so it's not going to make a difference in that regard. But if we were to see a big swap of that first and second place, that might be an indicator that we have some kind of issue going down and digging in. What we see in the data, at least from the staff perspective, and part of why we're putting this out to our community, for our community to see this and see, is there an issue that's coming forward, is we don't see a switch between the first and second spots. coming forward, is we don't see a switch between the first and second spots. Occasionally, there's a contest that is close. What typically, and from my perspective, I'm seeing that you have your candidates that are the second and third or fourth-place candidates, and that's where they're switching votes. That's where they're switching this placement of being preferred candidates. And so as I go down, I'm gonna go down through the years. So we're starting in 2016 with the three contests that went up. 2014 was a unique year in which we had no, it was uncontested for our mayor and for one of the council seats, but you see the other council seat that was up. There's a little bit of an exchange that happens, but what we're looking for is those big blocks of changes going on, which would give us an indication that there's actually a huge change happening maybe in one district, but not across all the others. As we roll back, we're gonna go into 2012. This is our first mayoral election. And again, this is from Attachment Six in the staff report and can also be accessed through the city's website. Again, we had two uncontested seats. I would call these elections pretty straightforward by the numbers. You're not seeing any kind of a distinction at that precinct level of a significant amount that's showing us that, from our district system, that something's going sideways. Going back to the next election, and I think what you're gonna see is a more interesting election going on there on the far right. But again, you're gonna see a green band, which is that is the individual that got elected. A lot of those exchanges and that placement of votes at a precinct level starts happening in those second and third, fourth candidates. And I have to squint to see, I think I'm in 2006 at this point, and we continue to roll But again, all this data, this is a way and a lens of looking at the information that we have out here. It's a way to put this out in front of our community, so our community can digest this, tell us what they're seeing as far as these numbers. And it's a shot at taking a lot of data and trying to get a snapshot in time of what's happening through the history of Elk Grove's voting for almost the past 20 years. And I don't think I intend to end it on this.
But you do intend to end it at some point, right?
I intend to end it here with just some last questions. So as we end, part of it is just going through those numbers is really giving another perspective, giving a lens, and seeing if our structure, going back to this question about from district and by district, are we seeing some differences that warrant some concern? Combine that along with our demographics that we have in the city, where we have a dispersion of our ethnicity across our city. Are we seeing somewhere where we're seeing candidates that are not being elected by preferred groups? This is to put the data out there. It's to start this discussion, and that's where my presentation ends. And I turn it, I think we have some folks signed up for public comment, but I'm available for questions now.
Questions, members? No question?
Yeah.
I guess probably the most comparable city would be Sacramento. At one point, Sacramento was an at-large?
The data that I understand from the city of Sacramento, I believe their charter, far back in the days, and I wanna say back to the early 1900s, I believe they have had a mayor and eight council districts. And I think back in the days, they were, there were no districts. I think where districting came in is around the 1970s, when you have a lot of election reform law coming forward. And in the 70s, they started moving forward with having by-district elections for their eight council member seats. I'm not sure of the history of their mayoral seat. I think that might have changed over time.
Where am I getting at is, I'm curious, you know, comparable size, at what point do we switch over to by-district? Maybe is there a rule of thumb in your research that you found?
I haven't seen anything that triggers based on size. I wanna say that the city of Sacramento probably wouldn't, as it had eight council seats, well, and I guess, but they didn't go to by-district, and I think their numbers back in the 1970s, they were probably north of 200,000. I did have that number at some point, but I'd have to go pull that back up. But I thought they were around 240,000 back in the 1970s. I think part of it is through that legislative analysis, but the legislative analysis, I have to kind of, I'd have to qualify that, that it was specifically looking at cities that were over 100,000 population and were not by-district systems, because the goal was to convert them to by-district. So I actually don't have numbers about when cities made conversions over to by-district systems.
In your analysis, you know, I'll be honest with you, that was overwhelmed with the data. At any one point, did any, in the history of Elk Grove, had any council member have actually lost the district in which they're from and won the election?
Not that I could see. So there's not a situation that I've seen where a council member is winning within their district that they were in, but they were defeated because of the collective efforts outside of their district.
Okay. Nope, no more questions? All right, no questions.
Thanks, Jason.
All right, we have a couple of speakers signed up to speak. I wanna open public comment. I wanna invite Kevin Ferrera to come on down.
Hey, Kevin.
Good evening, Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Sue, and council members. I'm Kevin Ferrera, the Executive Director of the Sacramento Sierras Building and Construction Trades Council, and we support the current voting structure of the city. Our apprentice membership is 68% people of color, and they are highly confident in the voting process as is, and see no need for change. So thank you very much.
Okay, next speaker is Randy Becker.
Well, I kind of opened Pandora's box the last time. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I think that the graphs, if you follow them dot-to-dot, pretty much states what we all thought. But what does bring interest to me, which is something I've been toying with, that I've talked to a couple of you about, which Jason brings up, we're not that far away from a census in 2020. And I think 2020 will answer the mayor's question, when do we go to by-district? I think that you'll have a clearer picture. I think it'll also be a clear picture if we wanna expand from five to seven members, especially since we've grown. It would be saddening to go backwards to 2010. If you look at the population in 2010 compared to where we are today, and then, not only that, you try to put ethnicity to that, those numbers would be damn near impossible. We'd be back to the same spot, just a different voting, but the same spot. I do think that, you know, this is a lot for a normal person to digest. I still think that the public should understand how by-district works and how our current system works. Because I can sum it up real quick. Mr. Hume is my councilman. Mr. Lee is my mayor. Right now, I get to vote for the five of you. However, by-district, I get to vote for Mr. Hume, Mr. Lee. The three of you get to sit in jurisdiction and judgment of me. So basically, the three of you get a pass. I don't get to vote for you. And that's what we had with the county. And I'll end this with this. Earlier today, I commented on the unfortunate situation in Sacramento. Sacramento, part of Sacramento's problem is social. And they spend a lot of time trying to woo the kings downtown. And they've spent a lot of time with the rail yard. And if we end up like Sacramento someday, we could have a by-district where Mr. Hume's district could be left, as Mr. Carr's district has been left in Medview. Why, the west side of Elk Grove, the Laguna, and the south spear that everybody is going to be hungry after in 10, 5, 8, 15 years, Old Elk Grove will become Skid Row. So that's something we need to think about, because it will happen. If you don't, make sure all the city moves together. It will happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Becker.
Evening again. I only came up here to say one thing. I wanna compliment Jason Lindgren on his presentation tonight. It was clear, it was informative, maybe a tad long, but it's probably been one of the best I've ever heard from one of the city staffers. So I wanna congratulate him for that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Seeing that there are no additional members of the public signed up to speak, I wanna close the public comment, council deliberation, and direction.
I wanna echo Mr. Lindsey's comments. I was joking with you about the length of the presentation, Jason, but I was impressed with the staff report in the binder, but even more impressed with how you sort of disseminated that and put it into terms and laid it all out from the history and from a, sort of the demography of the city. And one of the things that really impressed me is going all the way back to the fortuitous fact that five people were elected at large with enough geographic distribution within the city that those districts originally could be drawn, and that when you look at the current district maps, the city of, the whole city is a kaleidoscope of demographics, and each individual district is a kaleidoscope of demographics. And to see those bands of columns of the homogeneity of voting patterns across the districts, I think was very interesting. And I wanna point out something that goes back to that history timeline, that in 2010, when there was the advisory vote to go from five council members to seven council members, that was also the election to go to a directly elected mayor, if I remember correctly. And by California statute, you have to put two questions on such a ballot. One, do you want to go to a directly elected mayor? And two, if you do, do you want that term to be two years or four years? The voters chose to go to a directly elected mayor, and they chose to make that term two years. I think for the very reason Mr. Becker pointed out, is because they wanted the opportunity to hold their electeds more accountable, not less. And so if you look at the case of county of Sacramento supervisors, you only get one contest every four years, as opposed to three contests every two years for the people who represent your city. And so as this topic has been discussed, and I've been talking to constituents about it and been looking at the maps and the numbers and everything, one of the themes that comes up, at least for my district constituency, is their dilution of vote, not from a racial or ethnic demographic or political ideological demographic, but from an isolation demographic that was just mentioned. They recall the days of votes coming down 4-1, and the Elk Grove representative was on the losing side of those votes. And so what the rest of the board wanted to happen to Elk Grove is what happened. And they fear that the same thing could happen in Elk Grove, that as pressures continue to go with trying to densify some of that land, the rural area that we fought so hard for will be eroded because those folks on the more dense side of the city will have no accountability. So I have to listen to that as we consider these options. But Jason, thank you so much for putting this together. I did take the staff report out, so I can take it home and kinda walk over these numbers a little bit more, but I looked them over this weekend, and just at first blush, I mean, it's just pretty impressive, the picture that is painted by what you put together.
I would be a bit remiss that the staff report is titled by two staff members, and I do wanna tip my hat to Mr. Jonathan Hobbs. Myself going through all these numbers, and part of the presentation is to have a community dialogue and get this foundation straight from the start about the definitions, the terms, the numbers that we're looking at. And I just appreciate the assistance and the guidance of Mr. Hobbs, and making sure that we're sending a clear definitional terms and setting that solid foundation. Thank you, Mr. Hobbs.
Never seen.
Yeah, you know, just to echo some of the comments Councilman Hume mentioned, I also wanna give my kudos, Jason, because, I mean, while we were joking about the length, it flew by, because there was just so much good information, and the way you presented it, I think, was very well done. Also to echo, piggyback, I guess, off of what Councilmember Hume was saying, I experienced that same challenge as an appointee to the Community Planning Advisory Council, and I've said this numerous times, but, you know, I'll say it again, because we were revisiting this topic. But the challenge for us was getting other supervisors that did not live in this area to be compelled to feel what we were dealing with, which was a rezoning of lands that were intended for office and was being asked to be rezoned for residential development. And so ultimately, it ended up being a compromise, but it was still not something that, it did not benefit the community overall, I felt, because it took away the opportunity for a large employment center in the west side of town. So when I look at these numbers, and as Jason presented, it's actually, it's a, I'll call it a coincidence, because who could have predicted how everybody would have lived and come together in the city? But when you look at how well the districts, the demographics track with the overall demographics of the city, the demographics of each district tracks with the overall demographics of the city. This subject came up because there's a lot of contentions about voter dilution and disenfranchised communities, but when you look at the data, I don't see it. So it gives me a lot of confidence in the current system that we have, at least at this point in time. So I'll be curious to see what happens in 2020 as well, when we redo the census, and see if, how things change, and maybe revisit the conversation then. Thanks.
Go ahead, Member Detrick.
Well, Jason, I don't think you could have done it any shorter in giving us the quality that we needed. In fact, I'd like to see this put up on our website, and that way, we can refer to people as they come up with questions. Because from, you broke it down about as simply as you could, and I think really, in layman's terms, people can understand this. And I think your colored graphs are a telltale sign of exactly what people have done. And I agree that there aren't pockets that are showing up that's being touted by people. So I'm really big on facts and data. This is facts and data that support the unique city that we have. And someone could say, yeah, we're unique, that's why we need to change. I think we're unique because it's special, what we're able to do. And I, you know, continue to support the from-district principle, because I wanna have everybody up here. If I'm sitting out there and I'm no longer elected, I want it to be able to have a say on every person who's gonna be sitting up here. Because as Randy said, you don't wanna leave Old Town hanging, you don't wanna leave Laguna West hanging. This way, everybody is working, pulling the plow in the same direction. Otherwise, you're gonna pull it potentially, you know, people say, well, that won't happen, or is somebody being not pure if they're gonna get on the council and only represent their district? Well, it does happen. I'm not saying any one of the five of us would do it, but you could end up with somebody up here. Or, as was mentioned, you could end up with three people that you didn't have an opportunity to vote for, who are gonna cram everything in your neighborhood. So excellent job, and I support the system we had strongly.
Member Hume?
Thank you, sir. So I, you know, I agree everything that was said, but I will also go as far as to saying, last, maybe it was two weeks ago, we had a gentleman speak, Mr. Frank Reno, and he talked about the issues he was having, and he lived in Councilmember Hume's district. But we saw how our Vice Mayor Sue and our Member Detrick jumped in to assist with that. I'll also go to the example, when I first got on the council, when I was first appointed to the council, there was a lady that came to talk about her trailer that was parked there, that folks were complaining, and being new to the council, and her being my district, I saw everybody jump in and assist with that. And I give you that as an example, because if we were to go to by-district, and I'm not saying anybody on this council would do that, but that, as Councilmember Hume had said earlier, is that there is, you know, there would be no need for them to jump in, not that anybody on here would do that, but we're not gonna be here forever, right? And this council's gonna change, and you may have council members that may see it as this individual's not in my district, it doesn't matter. And I can tell you that I've experienced that in different cities that I've worked in, is that when you have council members that are from district, by district, and the voting system is that way, you will have folks that do not care when you're fighting for an issue or a cause, and you could just be that one voter, and you just don't know whichever way the other council members are gonna vote. And so I'm... And so I'm in favor of the, the way we have the system now. As we talked about how the city is so diverse, and I take a look at the other council members that have served up here, we've had a Latino, an African American, a Portuguese, and now you have three APIs. And so we look, and that is a melting pot, truly, to me, that reflects our city.
Excellent. Hey, Jason, I have a quick question. What other hybrid system like the Elk Grove system is there in the state, aside from the school district? Do you know?
Elk Grove gets into that category with, that we have a directly elected mayor and from district. I'm not familiar with other agencies, but I could put out the feelers and find out how many others follow a similar model.
Yeah, just kind of curious, because when I was on the school board, the discussion was, this was the last of the remaining system. I'm not sure if that's accurate, and so I was kind of curious.
Because help me out, I don't, there's no at-large seat, correct, for the school district?
I, I, yeah, I think what I mean is that it's only the- Qualifying by district and voting at large is what I was interested in.
Right, for all the seats. So they'd be actually a pure from district system, will have the directly elected mayor with that addition of also being from district, so. But I could look out there and report back, just as far as if there are any cities that are following a similar model.
Okay. Well, I want to thank you, Jason, along with my colleagues, on an excellent report. It was certainly intense, and so I appreciate your ability to, to break it down and, you know, allow for us to digest the, the data. You know, I've made it clear before that I've, have always wanted, for this particular item, to come back, to be discussed, in hopes that people would have all the information so that they can make some, make wise decision. My position is clear, and, you know, I don't want to belabor this, but my colleagues know that I would be in favor of by district, and particularly along the lines of what I've expressed earlier. Even though it may not have happened in the past, I think our city's been very fortunate to be able to have council members that actually win their council seat, or their voters within their council district, and also at large. My concern is, as we grow in this direction, there may be a point, and the possibility does exist, in which a candidate can actually lose their council seat and win at large, yielding them, being that council member for that district, representing a, or representing a district technically, where they don't have the majority of the votes from that council district. Now, granted, I'm, I'm, as you have indicated, Jason, that this hasn't happened in the past, but I'm talking about building infrastructure, building the ability so that we can actually deal with this in the future. You know, as a Member Huen has stated, we're very fortunate to have had representatives that's very diverse previously, and currently. My only concern is that two of the members on this council were appointed, and no due respect, you know, I mean, no disrespect, that is. And I appreciate your contribution, and I think that, you know, that's helpful, and I think it's good to see diversity. But we're a representative government, and I think it's important for us to elect those to represent the constituency. And, you know, that's real key and, and important for me. I also believe that by district elections would, would yield the best council member that would be responsive to the issues within that district. Now, I understand and appreciate the, the competing argument indicating that districts may be left behind. Being consistent with a representative government, I truly believe that somebody who's from the district will have that district in their best interests, and will fight like crazy to make sure that the interests of that district is defended. Now, the reason why this is important is because during elections, I've seen it many times before, candidates would campaign in high turnout areas, whereas low turnout areas are neglected. I think that's a very legitimate issue, because those neighborhoods have issues and concerns in which they would voice and, and would have concerns as well. And my thought here, along these lines, is that we want to be proactive, we want to make sure that representatives are very responsive along to their particular district. The other reasons why I believe this is important is, I understand-
Mr. Mayor, not, not, sorry to interrupt, I'd, I'd like to move the 10 o'clock rule.
All right. Got a motion, second?
Sure.
All right. Okay, the other, the other reason why this is important, because I truly believe that one voter deserves one vote. As we've seen before, the competing argument whenever a council member ascends to a different office, is that we can't afford to have a special election. That defeats the whole purpose of a democracy. And we've seen on this council, multiple political appointments onto this council. And I, you know, that's a serious concern. I think that we need to be in a position in which, if in the event, any one of us should ascend or decide not to run anymore, or something, some sort of a family emergency or life crisis may happen in which we have to leave, I think it's important for us to hold an election, so that we can actually hear the voice of the community. The, the only, the, the biggest concern that I have really is about making sure that representation is, is from that, from our community. And I think that in, if we're going to continue this pattern of appointing, you know, members onto this council, it's just the wrong direction that we should, that we should keep. Now, that being the case, you know, I obviously don't have the support of the council to put this on the ballot, but what I really wanted is all the data, so that we can actually discuss this. And I appreciate and respect the members of the public tonight who voiced their concerns, and my colleagues on this council who voiced your concern. But that's where, that's where I'm at.
Mayor, so I just want to add a couple of things. First, I just wanted to correct you, I mean, it's true, I was appointed in '14, but I, I was subsequently elected now, regardless of, you know, people want to argue how, but I am-
That is correct, right. Yeah, apologize for that. I meant the initial appointment.
I understand. Thank you. Okay. But the other, the other thing is, you know, as was, we heard earlier, it was the, the vote of the mayor, the term of the mayor being two years, that was something that was voted by, by, by the people. So we're dealing with this fallout, and I've always said, no system is perfect, there's always pros and cons to each one. And I'm just saying that when does it actually make sense to change from one set of pros and cons to another set of pros and cons? So there needs to be a clear advantage, and, and that's where, and I appreciate your perspective too, I just don't agree. Given the data that we're seeing, I don't see the data that, that warrants us for a change today. Again, I could change in 2020 when we, when we do the, the, the new census, or, you know, subsequently, someone does start to get re-elected or elected, losing their district but being elected at large, or not caring about anything outside of their district. I mean, I, if, if that, those kinds of things start to, start to happen, I could see we need to have some serious conversations then. But the other thing is, yes, we have chosen to try to manage, be fiscally conservative, and choose to appoint rather than hold an expensive election. That's also a choice, that is something we could also talk about, doesn't mean we have to change the entire voting structure. So those are, these are conversations that we can have if that, in the event, something like that happens again. And then, I just want to, if, if the council's willing, I'd want to go a step farther than to just post data online, because that kind of, you know, forces folks to come to us. When we did the, when we did the general plan update, we had, you know, teams of folks out at, at festivals and things, educating folks about the general plan. I'd like to see something similar about educating folks about our city, and how it's distinctly different than other cities. I think people, whether it's Sacramento or any, any other, I think folks have a, just a perception in mind about a city. And I think it, Elk Grove is very unique, and it, I think it's great for us to show off and, and at least showcase what our uniqueness is. So highlighting the from district versus by, highlighting the difference between the CSD and, and, and the city and versus the sewer and water district, our budget, how we depend, you know, or our, our property taxes is distributed for every property tax dollar, excuse me. Basically, everything that makes Elk Grove unique, so kind of a know your city campaign, would, would folks be interested in doing, doing something like that?
Sure.
Sure, why not? I mean, that's the whole purpose of the webpage, so I would support that.
But I'm going beyond the webpage, I'm going, you know, when you have a booth at the city, you know, we have booths all the time at, at fairs and festivals and things, and we can offer this information there as well.
So I, I'm totally in favor of what you're speaking of. I would probably tend to tweak it a little bit, and rather than dedicate a lot of ongoing staff time, that maybe we, we look at somebody putting together some collateral that, that says all of those things, much like our little budget-
Like a fact sheet or something.
Fact sheet kind of a deal?
Yeah, I like that, yeah.
Actually, I thought that's what, what you were planning, where we'd have those handouts at events.
Well, swag is always good, but, you know, when we did the general plan, we also had people kind of, there, there's interactive things. I mean, however, however we might, we feel it'll, it'll resonate with folks, you know, I'm open to. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Anyone else? The, the only thing that I would add is, you know, sooner or later, we're going to go by district, might as well do it now, considering the, the amount of interest from the community and so forth.
There isn't that interest, though. I mean, what part of the people we're speaking to are saying they don't want it, aren't you hearing? I mean, you're trying to force a system on people that they're saying they don't want at an arbitrary time in, in our history.
Councilman Hume, I hear what you're saying, I respect your position, I'm just stating my position. So, thank you, sir. All right. There's anything else?